Welcome to the Economic Development and Special Development Projects Committee Meeting. Today's Thursday, August the 30th, I'm sorry, September the 30th. Do not want to go backward at all. Thank you for joining us today. We have two exciting topics as part of our committee. Today, we have the New Orleans Business Alliance, NOLA BA. Norman Barnum, the interim executive director for NOLA BA is here to talk about the city of New Orleans economic development. Second items on our agenda is going to be the Small Business Administration. Today, we have Shashil Kumar, my good friend, longtime disaster partner with the SBA. He's the Public Information Officer. And then we also have a very old friend of mine as well, Carmen Sunda, that I did not recognize for a minute because she, her hair is different. She is with the SBDC Louisiana, the Greater New Orleans and River Region. So, thank you so much for being here. So with all that, I'll go ahead and turn the floor over to Norman, interim executive director for NOLA BA.
Counselor member.
I'm sorry.
Roll call.
We have to do roll call.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep, roll call. Counselor member, when?
Here.
Counselor member, Glapion? Counselor member, Jeruso?
Here.
Counselor member, Banks?
Here.
Counselor member, Brissette. We have a call.
Thank you, UB. Now, at this time, we'll turn the floor over to Norman Barnum, the interim executive director for NOLA BA.
Hey, good morning, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here. Before I get through the presentation, I wanted to make it a point to, this is the first time I'm going before a body as the interim president and CEO of the New Orleans Business Alliance. For three years previous to this, I've been the chief financial officer of the New Orleans Business Alliance. And for me personally, I would want to make sure I can express, as a native New Orleanian, a graduate of McDonough 35 and Xavier University, and my first three years professionally as a sales use tax auditor in the city of New Orleans, it just feels like my journey has been completed and I'm now able to direct the efforts of the Economic Development Agency from the city that I began in and started. So with that being said, I would like to go through this PowerPoint presentation. And what this is, is a clear definitive statement of what NOLA BA's role in this market is relative to economic development in Orleans Parish specific. This is going to give you a strategic overview of our actions and activities since July 1st, when I was named interim president and CEO, and was given the mantle to bring forth and excite economic development in our parish. With that being said, I'd like to go through my first slide and deal with one of the things I think is very prevalent and what gets to the meat of the coconut, if you will. Majority of revenue generating assets in our parish are not controlled or monetized by the city of New Orleans. They are done by the state, the convention center, the port, the Superdome, the Bio District, et cetera. And one of these results is specifically, as our current mayor Cantrell, being the first and only mayor to attempt to redirect these dollars back to New Orleans that are generated, is to ensure that the allocation or the return on investment on our New Orleans acreage comes back to the city specific. And when I say the city specific, it is to this body, to Orleans Parish General Fund, to give us the resources needed to be able to do the infrastructure, the quality of life changes that we need in Orleans Parish specific. One of the things, or one of the baselines that I've do with my team at the New Orleans Business Alliance, is to ensure that there's an economic return on all of the transactions that we bring forward that will be generating not just direct and indirect, but return per acre on our footprint. And at this point, there's disparities between certain areas in the city and other areas. One of these results of what we find is extreme financial and community health disparities that exist within small geographical distances. One of the main areas that we could look at is the Clayborne Innovation District to see the level of health disparity, economic development activity, and investment versus the French quarters or a river up front. And this, we're about five, 10 minutes walk from that. So with that being said, on the first slide, I wanted this to be interactive as possible. I'll pause it and have any questions that the council may have of me. We'll keep it moving. The second slide, and I think is very much specific, is, is there duplicity? What is the difference between our regional partner and NOLA BA? And the one thing I would tell you specifically is, I have one customer, I advocate for one thing, and that is a transaction to be completed in Orleans Parish that will generate the economic return that we need, period. There is not duplicity, there is focus and accountability to Orleans Parish specific with the investment made into NOLA BA by our city partners as evidence with our CEA that was just consummated. I also want to make sure, the term that we are using internally at NOLA BA, what we do on all of our projects that we are creating, is homegrown and home-owned. And that is specific to make sure that the return on all of these initiatives are there. We have a strategic focus complementing with our city partners on small business growth, strategic neighborhood development, industry attraction retention, and capital investment and attraction. I can give you some specific examples for each. In the area of small business growth, my senior VP, a small business, Jeanette White Colon, has been instrumental in creating investment in vehicles and working with our CDFI partners and our city partners to invest NOLA COVID Relief Fund, $2 million to bring businesses and help them get back through the pandemic. The Resilient Corridor Initiative, that was one that was launched during the pandemic to make sure that through that area, we could sustain them. We have the Build NOLA Mobile Relief Fund. That is another fund that is derivative or driving small business growth, and not from 500, zero to 500,000, from a million to $10 million. What we're looking for is to create the small business growth opportunities and organically grow jobs and wealth here. And it can be done, and we have to invest in ourselves, and that's the vehicle by which we do it.
Norman, on the small business growth, do you guys, is this also includes those that want to start up a small business?
That's one of the areas, we have other partners in our market that will deal with startup. And then this is one of the areas that I want to make sure that we are not doing duplicity. We have the Urban League, we have Thrive NOLA, we have other agencies that can deal with startup to 500. But for us specifically, to drive that growth, that scalability, that's where NOLA BA is going to be at. That's the lane that we're going to ride through. And I think that's the area that these million dollar businesses that we can grow up. One of the first examples is LevelSet. We've seen that they did their sale. We took them and worked with them through their startup phase. I will go back later in my presentation relative to capital investment and attraction in a community investment fund, but this is the area that I think that NOLA BA's resources and expertise would most be well-served. Any other questions in small business growth? I'm very much attuned to our strategic neighborhood development. I think the crucial factor for me is each one of our neighborhoods have unique characteristics and unique opportunities. I was driven in this by our Opportunity Zone strategy specifically. That was one of the first things that we were looking at, all the zones in New Orleans, and trying to have a marketing and a strategy plan for each one of our zones. But specifically, the work that has been done in New Orleans East, particularly to strategic neighborhood development, the culture, the arts, the work with my senior VP Greg Lawson, has been really linking the needs and wants of the community to our plans or the investment or the projects that we want to create. We want to make sure we have alignment on the ground before we bring this thing forward. I've been very happy with the work in that area. I've also been happy with our work in industry attraction specifically in our Bio area. I have my senior VP of Bio, Jeanette Wyland, some tremendous work that we'll speak to later on when we go into the grants that we've been able to secure. And lastly, capital investment and attraction. When I came onboard NOLA BA, our profile for external investments were living into philanthropic partners, foundations, our city investment, and some specific stakeholder investment from our private sector community. But we have been able to branch out recently into federal investment with EDA. And I think this is one of the lanes that we're starting to find a lot of good traction in, and I think this is going to augment some private investment very strongly, and we'll talk about that a little later also. Any questions on this slide? I'll move forward. I think there's no better way to validate one's activities and does this model work and is this model effective for the Orleans Parish by looking at the results. What this slide will show you is foundations or EDA and foundations, investment into NOLA BA, investment into our concept, investment into our work product, investment into our business model as validation for our approach to Orleans Parish. In 2020, GRI, the Resilient Institute, Global Resilient Institute, worked with me, Jeff Schwartz, to create a, what I call a bible of what New Orleans East Opportunity Zones can be, what is the blueprint for moving forward with these zones. The final draft has just been put out, a 98-page document. I'd be happy to share that after I vet through it with this council, this committee. But that was one of the foundational pieces using data analysis to see what would be the strategy to move forward with. That foundational grant with EDA has now led to our Sprint Challenge Grant that we received, which is augmenting the city's investment in the Resilient Corridor Initiative to give more direct technical assistance to small businesses. I can tell you point blank what the issues are, accounting, legal, marketing. This is what these businesses need to scale. And we have been able to take the data from the Resilient Corridor Initiative, show that what that data was to our federal partners, and then get a grant to help us execute the next phase.
Where are these corridors? Can you identify those corridors, Norman?
Yes, of course. New Orleans East, Algiers, Lower Ninth World, Gentilly Resilience District, Holly Grove. These have been some of the specific corridors that we've been doing work in and creating what I call market analysis, foundational analysis to incite development and growth within those corridors. Each one of them have a different challenge, but each one of them have a different opportunity. And those are the things that we want to make sure that we bring forward to the private sector and help excite development in those corridors specifically for a pain point that will serve the community. Everybody wants to have retail, everybody wants to have healthcare. What are the things that we can do and show that will bring forward that in a micro level, macro level to that community? And this grant is helping us achieve that.
Do you guys get feedback from the small businesses that their challenges is also access to capital?
All the time.
Okay.
I think the biggest problem that all of us have is sources and uses. And when I say all of this, a small business, a municipality, or federal government, it's the same problem. The issue is, how do you attract it and give that capital the belief that you can give it a return, or you can make a substantial outcome? And I believe these grants are giving the businesses the best opportunity to create the best version of themselves, so they're underwriteable. And that has been the biggest issue, to create the habits with our small businesses that are sustainable habits. And we're making headway in that. I want to make sure these last two are very important. The $1.3 million award for wet lab space is a direct outgrowth from NOLA BA's ability to create opportunity. We saw the pain point in the market versus our work with Jeanette Wyland, that the wet lab space was the final stop on some of our Bio businesses. They did not have wet labs, and they would move. We needed to create capacity. This grant is going to help us create 8,500 square feet of capacity for wet lab space. The truth is, this market could take more than that, but this grant could help build or bring a spec builder wet lab to this market and give us additional capacity. And that is the true power of a public-private partnership. We do not do it all, but we can help leverage and excite the growth. So that grant, I thought, was a key indicator, and then followed up by continued investment in NOLA BA by one of our core funders, William K Kellogg Foundation. They took a strategic look at NOLA BA through a third party and did analysis. And what they saw was what we're moving to directionally. What should be your focus in this market? What is the pain point that NOLA BA executes in this market? Why do we make sure that there's not redundancy in this market? And their investment in our grant and our business model was extreme. We just got our award, $1.5 million. That was to augment the CEA with the city for $1 million, and it's continuing the momentum. I'll speak to some additional momentum that I just got text on on the next slide. This is the model. We are the people. We are the concierge consultants for economic development in Orleans Parish. It is the New Orleans Business Alliance. And under my leadership, I will tell you specifically, where it's not about activity, it's about outcome. We are driving to outcome. Any questions on this slide? Next slide. External validations. There's been many awards that we've been given from IEDC relative to our work during the pandemic, our business model, our dashboard, gold award, silver award, bronze award, but I'm going to tell this committee point blank. I recognize that these rewards do not indicate economic outcomes specifically. They are a indicator of our ability to be space leaders, industry leaders, standard bearers in this area. Any questions? Here's what I really wanted to get to. Our current projects that I think would be substantial for this market and will be part of transformation and not just transactions. The first slide, NOLA BA awaits a status of a build-to-scale application seeking funds to support creation of a community investment fund. Well, I'm here to tell you, I just got a text that we were awarded that.
Congratulations.
Today.
Congratulations.
And what this fund will do specifically is give the community the ability to invest in economic development and have a return. This is what we brought forward to the EDA. And if I give you one example of this, if in fact, a community investment fund was a seed investor in LevelSet, which this was sold for $500 million, and we were giving them support and activity as they were going through their growth phase, what would be the return? This is, there'll be more opportunities in this parish, there will be opportunities for the community to be part, not just of giving a grant, but giving equity, investment, and growth into themselves. These companies have to be in Orleans Parish, they have to generate jobs in Orleans Parish, direct and indirect. Very excited about that fund concept. You'll know at the end, can call me directly, text me directly on how this will work. We are still trapping this out, but that's what this grant is for.
Can you give us a 30,000-foot view of just exactly how that works?
In my opinion, or this is what we spent to the EDA. The economic development millage failed, but 44% of the people voted for it. We said to the EDA, maybe we need another mechanism for the community to invest in economic development a different way. And so what we presented to them is, can we get investment into this fund by the community, be it through direct unaccredited investment from a community member, from organizations, foundations? Can we take it in crypto? How can we get the community investment into our fund? And then the fund itself has to have the ability to invest in Orleans Parish business specific that generate the return that we started off this with. It has to be ratable, that will sustain Orleans Parish, that will come through this general fund and generate dollars. Councilman Banks, at this level, that's where we have it framed. With this money it's going to give us, is how do we get it granular? How do we make it more specific? Who will be on the advisory committee? How will we do the underwriting for it? Those are the things that we put forward in this application. There are some baseline funds in other areas that we may mimic, but the one thing I think specifically for this market is what I found. New Orleans is unique. Orleans Parish is unique. We cannot just baseline what somebody else do. We have to create bespoke solutions for us. And that's what I'm excited about specifically for that grant.
So just on that, Norman, so I'm just trying to think, and I know this is, you're still in the preliminary and trying to vet through this, are you guys thinking of, is there a target of size of their business, or there's a target of new business owners?
Yes, what I'm looking at is to augment what I call the gazelles. What are those companies that are at a million that are poised? And how can this particular fund be a part of their equity investment into them as they scale and grow? We have other funds, we have other products that can deal with small business growth.
Got it.
But this particular product, we want to make specific so this, the community could be part of the equity expansion of a business. Pretty much seed funding before these businesses go to Series A, Series B, we can be that seed funding, we can have that equity stake from the community, and then we can benefit from it. And it has not happened yet, but that's the hope. That's the hope that we can get from the fund.
Okay. I definitely want to stay engaged with you guys on that as you guys are vetting through the program.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The other two, specific. NOLA BA is the lead applicant for a grant to help alongside private investors create a model that enables the culture bearers and entrepreneurs to have global reach for their product and services, ensuring that those people in NOLA BA profits participate in profits. Here it is simply, what we saw with COVID specifically. New Orleans brand is unique, but the New Orleans brand required that you come through that airport, you touch us personally, we monetize, and we get paid. But when that didn't occur, what happens? And we have a concept that's proprietary. I am not ready to share it in full until we have this fully vetted through our city partners and our mayor. But I can tell you, this concept already has private investors lined up that can digitize and monetize our culture in a way that it has not been done. And this digitization will not be at the expense of the culture bearers. What we're going to have is a systemic way for the culture bearers to participate into this concept and get paid, directly through goods and services that they may provide, and indirectly through profits that are generated from the concept and pass-throughs through NOLA BA to cultural organizations. This is a systemic way that is not built upon a foundation, a grant, a handout. It is built upon the ability to generate self-sustaining revenues through a tried-and-true business model that has not been applied yet in Orleans Parish. Very excited about that. Would be happy to come back to you at a lighter point, once we have this ready for primetime, but very excited. Now, the tranche of money that this is coming from is from the CARES Act that had the designated money from the EDA for hospitality and tourism. That's the bucket that we're going after. The potential award or the budget that we're looking for for this award is about $4.5 The last potential transformative grant, and Counselor member, when, we've already asked you for a letter of support relative to this grant. NOLA BA is the lead applicant for a grant to help fund alongside private investors infrastructure challenges in New Orleans East, to catalyze development of an innovation corridor that leverages NASA, MISHU, and STEMNOLA developments, all with an equity and inclusion lens. Here it is. We have a catalyst campus, is a provider and an igniter of talent solutions for the end-users that go through NASA. Bowen, Lockheed Martin. This concept is basically, for lack of a better term, a mini-Google concept of a mini-Google campus in New Orleans East that serves as a talent pipeline and a small business anchor pipeline for NASA, MISHU. That's what this is about. This concept has already been demonstrated and been successful in Colorado Springs and Maryland. We are going to look at the Maryland campus directly, myself. I think we have a strong application, and the EDA was looking for transformation. The first tranche is a $500,000 planning grant. Once you get through the planning grant cycle, the potential award could be up to $100 million based upon the scale and the scope of the project as we're submitting. And so those are the things that, from my perspective, I wanted this board, this council committee to understand. NOLA BA does not just react to opportunities, we create opportunities. These are a direct result of our ability to understand the pain point in our market, the data analysis, and then bringing forward to the federal partners what our value proposition is and what the return is for investment. Any questions on these?
Norman, on that, and I just wanted to thank you guys for sponsoring that field trip when we toured.
The space camp.
The water.
The hostel, yeah.
Yeah, the water campus in Baton Rouge, because the governor and LED also announced a space campus initiative.
Yes.
In eastern New Orleans. So is this all connected, or?
This is the beauty of it. It's augmenting.
Okay.
The space campus is the deal with, as we met with NASA, MISHU, you have development inside the fence, development outside the fence. This augments the development outside of the fence.
Got it.
With a pipeline, a customized talent pipeline solution for all of those employers in the corridor. And it also gives an open capacity to build out STEMNOLA and as part of this innovation campus, and ignite development on that footprint in a way that we haven't seen. So I think, and I know the EDA is looking at, it is not just development of buildings, it is the development of an infrastructure. And so New Orleans East has the infrastructure challenges on that footprint, that is one of the things that they're looking at. The developer would be happy to do the buildings, but if they could take some of the pressure of the infrastructure off, that would be part of exciting the total development and finally connecting the dots. NASA, space campus, innovation zone, 510 corridor development, Six Flags, all the way to advanced manufacturing to the port facility in St. Bernard Parish. This is the plan that we need to execute in New Orleans East. 66% of our landmass is New Orleans East. The return on the acreage in New Orleans East has not been there. The Lake Forest Plaza at one point produced 25% of the sales tax to the general fund. Where's it gone? We have gotten no return in that area. And I think these particular projects are the beginning of creating a return that we still desperately need.
We're still working on the plaza. We're not giving up.
We're not giving it up.
Yeah, just for our viewers, the area, what Norman is talking about is in the New Orleans Regional Business Park, where NASA and Bowen is at, and where the vision of the space campus is going to be. And when we visited the water campus in Baton Rouge, and just for our viewer and my colleagues to kind of understand, a camp is kind of like everything there, Donna. There was housing there, there was restaurant there. So when you have people working in a very close area, you want to make sure that accessibility was also there. So it was really great to kind of see the water campus there, where there's job opportunity, where people can literally live, work, and play.
Mm-hmm.
Right? In that one area. And I know the New Orleans Regional Business Park has been an area that has been neglected for decades.
Yes.
But it's very valuable land that we can really create really high-paying job opportunity for our people there.
Yes.
And I'm just glad that we're, you know, connecting all the dots. It does take a minute, right?
It does.
Yeah. But I think the commitment is definitely there. Norman, you know that you have my commitment 100%, as long as we make sure that we do it right and that local residents has opportunity to these creation that we're bringing to our district.
And I think that's why the business model works so well. Strategic neighborhood, we are in the community, they are aware of what our concepts are, how do they participate? And not at the end, but at the beginning.
Correct.
I think the biggest thing that I wanted to express is, we're coming from the ground up. It's from the community up. And I think that is the most important thing. We're solving a pain point for the community. When we have the community's buy-in and we solve that pain point, it's going to be exponential for us to get the ratables. for us to get the ratables that we need. But that's the first order of business, and that's why it's Orleans Parish specific. That is why it's home-owned, homegrown. That is why, that's the focus.
Thank you.
That's all I have for you this morning. Anything relative to this presentation, you can reach me directly at the, my email address. And I just can tell you how I'm excited and how bullish I am on New Orleans, Orleans Parish. Yes, better days are ahead, and it is tomorrow, not down the road. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Norman, for being with us. And we definitely want to make sure that you come back and give us a follow-up on all of these opportunities as you guys finalize the program.
Thank you, guys.
Any other questions? We're good. Thank you so much. We're going to move to our second item on our agenda, the Small Business Administration. Today we have two presenters. Sushil Kumar with the SBA Public Information Officer and Carmen Sudan with the SBDC Greater New Orleans and Region, I'm sorry, River Region, here to provide us with the topic. A resident will be able to explore resources provided by the SBA that will help them respond, recover, and rebuild following the devastation of Hurricane Ida and prepare for natural disasters. So I'm going to go ahead and turn the floor over to Sushil.
Good morning, council members. Madam President, first things first, how do I move this forward?
Yeah, I'm going to have UB to come down and assist you with that.
Thank you, sir. Oh, sorry about that. Thanks for your help, sir. Appreciate it. The city came to the SBA's rescue. Appreciate it. Little play on words. Good morning, everyone. My name is Sushil, and I'm with the SBA. I am accompanied by a good friend, a valued colleague, and a terrific resource in the form of Carmen Sunda. She is with the Louisiana State Small Business Development Center. And her office is in Xavier University. She'll tell, share with you more of what she does and as our presentation goes. Cindy, again, a pleasure of serving you, ma'am. I'm with the Small Business Administration. What do we do? Very simply put, our role is to provide liquidity, and we are the primary source of funds for privately damaged properties post-disaster. And we do this in the form of interest, fixed interest rate loans as low as 1.563% for homeowners and renters, fixed over a maximum 30-year term, and for businesses and most private nonprofits. So all in all, we cover the gamut of society. Contrast that with our federal partners, FEMA, whose functionality is in the form of providing grants, safe, secure sanitary conditions upfront. So far, we have in excess of 450,000 referrals from FEMA. And what that basically means, in a presidential disaster such as this, Hurricane Ida, when you register with FEMA, you're referred over to the SBA based on the information that you personally filled out. And right now, the numbers are about 60% referral rate. Initially, those numbers were in the mid to low 50%. And I anticipate as more folks register, the numbers are going to rise. What is our role once you register with FEMA? Let me move forward real quick. That's our building in Sacramento. We're based out of the West Coast. Anything east of the Mississippi is handled out of Atlanta. So that's our office in Sacramento. Here is the, the state map of the declared area. Deep orange is not only primary physical damages, but also economic injury. And I'll discuss what economic injury means in layperson's terms. And contiguous parishes, which is on the fringes, in mustard color. So when you register with FEMA, which is required for homeowners and renters, you're referred over to the SBA based on the information that you provided to clear the conditionality that if you qualify for SBA, a combination of FEMA initial safe, secure sanitary grants along with our low-interest-rate disaster loans would have met the unmet needs created by the disaster. So in the deep orange area, that's what folks can do, not only homeowners, but renters, businesses of all sizes, and most private nonprofits. So for folks who are in the church mindset, the churches are also eligible for physical damages. As I mentioned, we are, if I had less than a 15-second timeframe, what do we do? We are the primary source of federal assistance to help private property owners pay for disaster losses not covered by insurance or other recoveries. So let me bring a couple of bullet points together. I mentioned referral from FEMA to the SBA. There are currently about 300,000 applicants statewide that have done nothing with their application. They'll get a phone call, they'll get an email, and get a package in the mail and encourage them to apply. Not taking any action means the recovery process has stopped right there. Imagine that. It's not rocket scientists to figure out that we need to move forward with the, with the mindset of recovery. In other words, apply with the SBA and find out whether you qualify for a personal property loan for up to $40,000, including cars amortized over a maximum 30-year term at as, rate as low as 1.563%. On the homeowner's side, $200,000 at the same interest rate. And bottom line, if you qualify, we're taken care of. Now, here's the critical part. If you don't qualify, that hand wringing that you initially had, "I don't want to apply for a loan, I don't qualify for a loan," becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy. And when then refer you back to FEMA for their other needs assistance. And that's an essential step. For those folks who are saying, "I don't want a loan, I don't qualify for a loan," make it happen. Make it real. Apply and find out what else you can qualify for. And last but not least, from Madam Councilwoman Winn, when she worked in the, in helping the community, she knows long-term recovery comes knocking on your door long after the federal partners have left. First question on the agenda is, did you apply for the SBA? And if the answer is no, any and all additional aid comes to a grinding halt.
And I think, Sushil, just on that, that you got to show that you have exhausted all of your means to get access to resources to help you to rebuild and not just skip areas that you don't want to apply and then expect a grant. So you want to make sure that you have exhausted all means and then after that. And normally, that group doesn't come in until several months. So they're not in place right now if people are looking for them.
That's correct. And as, as time passes, you'll see various community organizations step up and refer to themselves as part of a VOAD. And that's when you know long-term recovery is starting its formation. Right now, as of today, we have approved close to $258 million worth of funding in less than a month. So the program is real. It's there to serve a purpose. Which brings me to the next slide here. We all know that any type of disaster is financially unfriendly. The word disaster and unfriendly go hand in hand, in my opinion, and put to severe hardship in not only businesses, but also residents. What do we do when there is a shortfall in insurance? Bottom line, we cover the deductibles. We cover anything that your insurance has not paid. So for example, what I hear in the state of Louisiana, by the way, I'm a native. I immigrated from India in 1981 and attended Tulane for four years, a year of high school, and worked laborious hours here in the 90s. And I found myself leaving New Orleans because of Hurricane George, only to come back to help the community 10 years later and having served 26 years in banking. So it is a huge homecoming source for me to help my own community. So in short, folks, on, on TV and here amongst our esteemed panel, a dollar-for-dollar recovery is not in the offing because insurance companies don't make you whole dollar-for-dollar. There's always a percentage, and let me rephrase that, there's always a fraction of the face value of the insurance. We will cover those, not only for the underinsured, and of course, it's pretty obvious, if you're uninsured, we'll cover the entire amount. So one of the, the rallying points I have that I've been sharing with a lot of folks in my journey is, if you have insurance, the very first step you want to do is to provide an assignment of insurance proceeds form back to us. We're offering them to everyone that applies with us to take back to the insurance company, list all the details of the insurance and how much coverage they have so that we can have that assigned to the policy, in this case, the loan. So I'm going to use Cindy as an example. So let's say she's expecting $50,000. Her, her losses are $70,000, she's expecting a $50,000 check. Either she comes out of her own savings account for $20,000, puts it on her credit card, or not repair the things that she needs repaired for, and only does the $50,000 that she needs. Instead, by doing the assignment of insurance proceeds clause, if you're approved, SBA will increase the loan amount by the $50,000, thereby preserving your purchasing power, pay the contractor, and do the things that you would normally not engage the contractor for, and start the recovery process sooner than later. It's a huge facet. Was talking to many folks in the, in the adjoining parish who said, "I wrote a check, and I'm going to, I don't know what to do." And that's where our clause comes into play. And when we make those loans where the applicants have been qualified, we require an insurance policy protecting our investment and the homeowner's investment in the property. And what that does is reduce the reliance on federal disaster costs in the future. Because if you have an insurance policy, you would pick up the phone and say, "Look, I, I'm covered. What are you going to cover?" And then that gap is what you come to the SBA for in the future. So that's a mechanism that's built in. And these loans require borrowers to maintain appropriate hazard and flood insurance. And last but not least, as I was talking to the city fiscal manager, our role is to spur employment through the economic injury disaster loan, where businesses are able to tap in to this working capital loan, pay their people, pay product, pay inventory, and anything else that's part of that working capital mindset, and of course, stabilize tax bases.
Sushil, at the same interest rate, too?
2.855% for businesses, fixed for up to 30 years, no fees, no points, no closing costs, no PPM penalty. For those folks on this, on this, I shouldn't say show, but on this TV audience, if you will, please know that we're not competing against banks. No reference to the councilman, but we're talking about the actual banks in, in question. Fair enough. Pun intended, right? So the financial institutions cannot compete against this rate, neither do they offer to compete because they don't have the appetite, the capital structure, and a lot of things which is outside my expertise to talk about. So what we want to do is make sure that they borrow, use the funds, and get back to normalcy. So my appeal to all of you folks on this particular viewing item is either be an advocate or be an applicant. If you're not, if you're not hurt, be, be an advocate. If you're hurt, apply, find out, and move forward. Low interest rates, 1.563%, as low as, 2.855%, as low as. And for most nonprofits, and I'll explain the word most, 2% fixed, including places of worship. We have held two or three webinars in the New Orleans East that you may be aware of, Pontilly yesterday and the New Hope Church the day before. And we had a fairly sizable audience, and I'd like to offer the same scenarios for each one of your districts.
Cindy, let me, quick question. You said as low as, so is that determined by your individual credit rating or?
It is a, not a credit-based scenario in totality. It is based on a few other items, including your income, your capacity to repay, so on and so forth. So the term that we use in our halls is totality of circumstances. 98% of all of our loans historically are made at the lower rate.
And then what could be the higher end be? Let's just say you've got a...
Twice, literally twice that amount. Congress wants us to separate out what we call no credit elsewhere versus credit elsewhere. And the, the fact sheet that I'm about to talk about will demonstrate that the higher rate is 3.0163.
And when do the payments become due?
Five months after your, your first payment is due. In other words, you have a grace period of four months, their expected payment is five months from now.
Okay.
And the idea, great question. The idea behind that is something very fundamental. We're waiting for the economy to recover, stabilize, so that people have means by which they can repay. Now, on a case-by-case basis, councilman, they're actually offered an opportunity to request additional time. But generally speaking, the sweeping statement that I'll make is it's for five months.
And how long is the period, or how wide is the window to actually come in and apply? When does this disaster sunset?
October 28th.
Okay.
And all of your questions are about to be covered, so your curiosity is terrific. I'm going to be covering that in a moment. I appreciate you.
Okay.
And while we talk about deadlines and other items, our eligibility restrictions are very obvious. We cannot duplicate benefits, and we cannot approve loans for an applicant that are behind on their tax payments, child support payments, failure to maintain insurance from the previous disaster, if you will, or any back student loans that you might have. Pretty obvious, right? If you're delinquent on existing federal debt, why would somebody step in and say, "Here's more money"? So three-step process, keep it, I'll run through this fairly quickly for the sake of time. Step one, register with FEMA. Period and a sentence. They are the lead coordinating agency to provide the resources for a safe, secure sanitary condition upfront. Step two, apply with us. We've got centers, 16 centers around the state. I mean, yeah, 16 centers around the state. And I'll make sure that you folks have those locations after this meeting. They're, they're changing quite dynamically, because I wanted to make sure we have the most current one as of today. And then, of course, 1-800-659-2955 is our phone number. Once you, once you register, and I refer it over to the SBA, the application process starts. It's a physical, you have to take the next step. It's not automatic. I want to make sure that's the case. And then what happens is, we underwrite, start underwriting the whole process, working on the loan. And step two is, when someone actually shows up at your doorstep to evaluate the, the extent of the damages. And those damages are then trued up and reported back to the underwriter, who then contacts Councilman Banks and says, "Councilman Banks, we, we came to your house, 123 Main Street, damages are about $75,000. What do you say?" And you say, "Of course it is." And then they go over the income and expenses piece. Yeah, that adds up. And the equation very simply is, if you have $1,000 worth of revenue, for example, or income, $300 in expenses, can the remaining $700 then cash flow the amount of damages over a 30-year term at a fixed interest rate of 1.563%? It's that simple. And for the most part, if you pay your bills on time and everything else is in order, and I use the word "the most part," can't guarantee anybody any type of funds because lenders are liable if they commit and they don't deliver, for the most part, the loan is yours. That's step three. We're expecting funding to take place within four to five weeks. It's fairly quickly.
From the day of application?
From the day of the application. And here is a word of caution, words to the wise preaching to the choir. The more complete the application is, the better off the outcome. As the expression goes in many, many a social informal circle, garbage in, garbage out, please make sure you dot your i's, you cross your t's. If it's an RD, make sure you don't put a CT. If it is, if it is a junior, make sure you have a junior. Make, I mean, those are little things that'll throw the system out. We can only underwrite what's provided to us. On a case-by-case basis, there's money available for mitigation. What does that verified loss mean? If you look at it, it says exceed 20% of the total amount of the physical damages. What that means is, when the under, when the underwriter talks to you about what your damage losses were, at that point, it's considered verified. And just because you said so, we can add 20% to the value, in this case, for the value of the property, onto your loan. So damages were 100,000, 20% of that is $20,000. So damages were $100,000, 20% of that is $20,000, so the entire total loan package becomes $120,000 at the same rate. Now, the city has got a waiver in place for permits. You can use mitigation money potentially to have offset if there was something in place at the time. This is where I'm going to introduce my good friend Carmen, my colleague Carmen, and talk about her agency's role, and I'll cover a few other items. Carmen, floor is yours.
Thank you, Shashil. Again, my name is Carmen Sunda. I'm the Director of the Louisiana Small Business Development Center in Greater New Orleans and River Region. We are funded by the SBA, Louisiana Economic Development, and hosted and funded by Xavier University of Louisiana, which is where my office is. Basically, we handle all the problems, issues, challenges, everything that comes up with these disaster loans or anything else in the business. So one of the services we provide hand-in-hand with SBA Disaster is we help the individuals to work through the documentation. We also help them assess and evaluate what their injuries and their damages are, and what resources are available to them, and then we help them access those resources. I think the documentation becomes super important because as Shashil said, if the application's not complete with all the documentation they need, that four to six weeks to funding starts becoming a little bit longer. So we're really, really helpful in working through all of those things. And basically, we help them deal with strategic recovery plans. What am I going to do now? What should I be doing now? In a lot of cases, and we've been doing this through COVID, helping them to pivot their businesses. We've been working really hard at helping folks shore up their e-commerce and their marketing, and help them become online as well. And our skill sets at the center, basically, is financial packaging. That's one of the main things we do. So we're pretty adept, we're pretty good at this. And we have been doing disasters in this area for 16 years. That's why I know Councilman Cindy for so long. It's been a long time.
Yes.
And so we do this every disaster, but we also do this during regular times. So our services are completely free. I've provided the council with an entire listing of all the different things we do. At this point in time, we are also handling both of the disasters at the same time. So we're still working with COVID-impacted businesses on their issues, as well as handling the Hurricane Ida disaster and the economic injury. We also can assist them with business resiliency, sustainability strategies as part of that strategic recovery plan, and then, you know, what happens next. And in a lot of cases, they might not have their financial management. We were talking earlier with NOLA BA about the accounting and the financing and stuff like that. Those are the kinds of services we provide, helping them shore up those kinds of things. Also, a lot of marketing, website development, cybersecurity. Work with clients all the time on the cybersecurity issues. E-commerce, leadership, accounting, QuickBooks. Basically, all the operational things that a business needs to thrive and survive and be profitable and successful. So that's our role. We work hand-in-hand with a lot of partners. I get, we get a lot of referrals from the city's economic development. Work very closely with them. Also, NOLA BA refers a lot of folks, our other partnered organizations, as well as SBA Disaster. We're set up now with Hurricane Ida, where as people come into the business recovery centers and want additional assistance, they can sign up, and then those folks are referred directly to the SBDC. So we're doing that. One of the things we are doing, and I hope to have an announcement soon, we are trying to get a BRC set up at the lakefront. It's not quite done yet, but we hope to have a mobile SBDC unit in Orleans Parish at the lakefront, and it'll have an SBDC person there as well to complement the SBA folks that we hope will be there soon. So that is the one thing we're trying to do.
Carmen, is that like providing technical assistance?
Yes. What happens is, and we're doing this at some of the other, there's a BRC down in the River Region, so I have one person assigned to that region. So as they come through the BRC, then they're referred to the SBDC for all the other issues. I like to say we have the tissues for the issues, except we're doing it virtually a lot of times now. But it's just, you know, businesses, they just need to know what to do. They need to know, what does this form mean? How do I fill this out? What does the SBA mean by this, that, and the other? And we've been doing this for so long, like I said, pretty good at it. And what we don't know, we ask a lot of questions, and my buddy Shashil can tell you that I ask a lot of questions about a lot of things. So, but very, very happy to be here. And I will say one thing to the council. NOLA BA said that they weren't focusing on startups. We do work with startups all the time. We work with multimillion-dollar businesses all the way to startups. And one of the good things that happens after a disaster is that there is a steady interest in starting a business. It has been steady for the last year of people going to our training of how to start a business, how to do a business plan, and seeking funding for their new businesses. It's steady, it's not skyrocketing, but it's a steady stream, which means there are some new starts coming. And I know many members of our team are working with some pretty interesting starts right now. So we do kind of, we do it all, I guess, from the different businesses.
That's great. Thank you for answering that.
Happy to answer any questions.
So to tie it up in a nice, neat little bow, there are additional resource partners which are listed on my slide, the Women's Business Center through the Urban League. They also assist male businesses also. Don't want to sound like it's only women. Score chapters that serve as mentors, and the Veterans Business Outreach Center. So we refer to them in our circle as resource partners. And one institution that needs showcasing is my district office. Michael Ricks and Joanne Lawrence run that office, along with a few other folks. And their role in helping small businesses is second to none. They are part of the 70 Fabric, 504 Fabric, historically underutilized business zone, contracting, so on and so forth. The district office plays a very valuable role. And Mr. Ricks and Ms. Lawrence had other engagements today, so as a result, they could make it. So the critical part that the SBDC also offers is help businesses come back to us when we turn them down. We turn the businesses down usually for lack of cash flow, poor credit history, lack of repayment, insufficient information on the application, back to the reference of completing the application completely. And we'll refer them to the Carmans of the world. There are 10 locations statewide. And if they happen to be closer to Baton Rouge, we'll send them to refer to the Baton Rouge office. If it's closer to Monroe, that's what happens. They have each offices there. And Carla Holland, who is the State Director, is a tremendous resource, along with Brian Greenwood, who is the Associate State Director. And they have nothing short of fabulous in their engagement in helping folks. So what happens then is, when we refer it over to the SBDC, they help you craft a letter of reconsideration, and you have six months from the time you've been turned down. Okay? And the letter will come to the applicant stating, "Hey, guess what? You were turned on for this reason." Now, if there's any objections to the turn down at the time of receipt, you can request reconsideration, because we're only looking at the information that they provided. So if that information is incorrect, we can certainly fix it and help them get the funds that they need. And of course, it's free.
And I will say to the council, we've been somewhat successful in getting reconsiderations funded. Because like Shashil said, sometimes it's just a matter of presenting the information more clearly. The application wasn't clear, the documentation wasn't clear. And sometimes, we do have to wait the few months while they clean up whatever it is the issue is, whether it's cleaning up the financials or cleaning up their credit. And we've been pretty successful in being able to get them funded after that. So thank you for remembering to mention that.
Of course. A statistic that I'd rather not share, but it's in the public domain, and for the purposes of it being insidious. One in five businesses, in this case, one in four businesses, that stay closed for the first five days of a natural disaster has a 90% failure rate at the end of the first year. Mr. Barnum was talking about startups, seed funding. Carmen's talking about helping businesses establish themselves. Let's encourage those folks in the city and adjacent parishes to apply for the economic injury disaster loan so that they don't become a statistic. So far, as I mentioned, we have over a quarter of a billion dollars in funding. About 6,000 applications approved in the city. I'm encouraged to see that quite a few applicants have been approved for the IDOL program in the city. But we need to do more. We see a lot of city corners still closed for various reasons, and it could be liquidity. And the absence of liquidity will drive you into insolvency. And we don't want an applicant out there who's a business owner to be insolvent or not have liquidity. That's our role to provide. Borrow the money, take the grace period, pay your people, pay your product, reopen as soon as possible. And the failure rate for a business, on average, is 20% anyway. So the fact that you were not open post-disaster only hastens the process. A one-page catch-all, looks like the PowerPoint is playing tricks and it's not clear, but 1-800-659-2955. And that's our one page for all matters, SBA for contact purposes. I appreciate the time and look forward to working with each one of you. My personal plea to all of you is, please use our services. You can go into the Business Recovery Center for the SBA, where we're partnered up with the SBDC. Walk into our temporary DRC locations where FEMA is present. I'm available for personalized webinars, town hall meetings, and being in person. I'm here to serve the city, a city that I love, a city that gave me my first start way back when I was a college student. And I recall Lord &amp; Taylor across the street once upon a time. And that tells you that I go back way, way, way back, just as much as yours. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Shashil. Jay?
You offered to be able to come and make presentations in the districts. What do we need to do to facilitate that? I'd love to have you come throughout District B to share this information. I think this is vital. And most folks probably don't know that these opportunities are as simple as they are to try to get.
I'm going to borrow a billboard that we see all over town. It says, "One call, y'all."
Okay.
And my phone number is on the business card that I believe Terry has left. "Please call me," and we can set that up. And that goes for all of the districts. I've had two or three with Madam President.
Just four or five in District E.
Yeah. And I would love to do it for Mr. Brosset, Ms. Glampion, yourself, Mr. Banks, and Mr. Jerusale.
My contact information is on the flyer that I presented. I think you guys are going to get a copy of it. And I would encourage your referrals, because I know you're getting calls from your constituents. What do I do? Just refer them to the SBDC. We can help them sort through it.
Thank you.
Right now, as I would stating to someone else, everyone's drinking out of a fire hydrant. And what we want to do is to break down the presentation to manageable chunks, step by step, anything is possible, right? Inch by inch, anything is a cinch. So we want to break that down in our presentations. What actionable items do we need to take, step by step, to get to where you need to be? Whether it's FEMA grants all the way across by being turned down by the SBA, or a combination of FEMA's safe, secure sanitary condition grants plus an SBA loan. There's a lot of confusion amongst people that says, "Which agents do I apply to? What do I do?" Well, you need to do both. So we want to clarify those types of things.
Okay.
Shashil, on the SBA application, so once you submit your application, how soon do you should get a respond from SBA if they're still missing documents to vet through the application?
We don't, we have an internal aging process. In other words, if it's stale-dated, we'll withdraw the application and have the applicant come back and preserve their place in line. So generally speaking, it's about seven to 10 days, I would say 14, for you to provide that information. Because we don't want to see, for example, you, Cindy. "So, Shashil, I'll get that to you, I'll get that to you, I'll get that to you," and it's 14 days later.
Yeah.
So if you're not able to get it, we'll withdraw it. And you can, we'll do is, we'll send you a letter that says we withdrew it. You have, these are the rights that you have to reapply, and your place in line is not lost.
Yeah. Now, so I apply, and just for our view to understand, when you apply online, I think that's the easiest way. You have to sign an electronic version so SBA can get access to your return. I did that, submitted that. And so I've basically been waiting to get a respond in reference to my next step then.
Perfect, that's exactly right. You'll get an email. As I mentioned, we have close to 463,000 referrals from FEMA and about 31,000 applications in the pipeline. So we're diligently working to bring that and handle that, if you will.
Yeah. And I know you touched about the home repairs from Ida. I definitely want to, and then you mentioned mitigation. And I know you and I have talked about mitigation quite often. I'm also about preparing our residents, because we do live in a hurricane region, and we want to make sure that we protect our property and taking advantage of the SBA funds that are available that people can mitigate. And one thing that I share with Shashil and several of my colleagues is that, you know, with Ida, I've lost power for seven, eight days. And it was hot. So what can I do as a homeowner to avoid or limit that situation for my family? And so I know we're talking about getting a Generex as a way of mitigating my home to protect and be prepared for a future disaster. Is this something that SBA will consider as part of mitigation?
My short answer to you would be apply and find out. The list is constantly updated with items which are considered acceptable use. So I don't want to consider doing what we call a field eligibility denial. So feel free to apply and find out what we do. The other part that, while you were speaking, something came to mind was, there is a separate pot of money for COVID IDOL.
What is that?
So that basically means that folks that were injured during COVID, and that's economic injury disaster loan only, that's a separate path. One thing you want to keep in mind is, we also have economic injury disaster loan under Hurricane Ida. Whatever you do, don't duplicate the timeframe. So in other words, if you're asking for money for the month of September under COVID program, which is acceptable use of proceeds, do not apply under the Hurricane Ida. It'll be a turn down immediately, because you can't borrow money from two sources or a single incident. Go ahead and apply for the physical damages. And again, visit our centers. Call the 800 number. On a case-by-case basis, if applicants or your constituents, in this case, reach out to each one of you, send me an email. If it's fairly simple, I'll send you the message right back. Terry has done that gratuitously. So as Madam President, I'm referring to Madam President because of, you know, anyway. I'm glad to answer those questions, because sometimes a simple answer is all someone's seeking, and I'm glad to do that.
And, Councilman, we are aware of that, the coverage period, because we've been working both disasters at the same time. So we sometimes get those questions from clients, and we can help them work through that as well.
There was a fact sheet that I promised Councilman Banks to go over.
There it is, right there.
And here we are. So basically, the fact sheet, sir, you talked about the deadline you wanted to know. There it is, smack in the bottom, October 28th. Up top, you'll see all of the parishes listed. Economic injuries a little further out, May 31st for economic injury. The interest rate that you sought questions about is also listed there, 1.563%. No credit available versus credit available elsewhere. 2% money fixed for 30 years. Loan limits, restrictions. And I promised I would talk briefly about refinancing. On a case-by-case basis, if we're able to lend you money and you qualify for monies from us, there's evidence of a first mortgage, plan on staying on the property and plan on repairing the property. If the sums of money is below $200,000, we can refinance the whole thing potentially for 1.563%.
Yep.
So some of your constituents might fall into that category. Now, the criterion that I mentioned is not the catch-all. There's other items you've got to go through. But that gives you a window of what else we can do with our program, including relocation. On a case-by-case basis, SBA monies can be used to relocate. And involuntary relocation is a huge factor there. Someone says, "My source of income, just moved from here to there. Takes me too long to get." That might be a scenario that can be considered and has been in the past. So this is part of my presentation packet. Any other questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Any other questions, I'll be glad to answer them. And I appreciate the opportunity to be in front of this august panel.
I just wanted to share that colleagues, so Sean and I actually took advantage of the refinancing when Hurricane Katrina came. And for those that are viewing, it was basically a lifesaver for us in reference to organizing your debt versus your income at that time. And I have to say that it reduced my monthly payment from $1,500 that I was paying on my first and my second mortgage to $600 in months. So a huge saving. It is what it is, you know, but it definitely provides some sort of relief. And I know that many of our residents in our city of New Orleans are very stressed in reference to Ida and then, of course, the stress of COVID-19. So I think, Carmen, you mentioned the, the two crises that we've been going through. So, and I was talking to Ms. Linda last night and she just literally lost it. And I want to encourage people to stay strong. You know, we're going to get through this together. You can't go through the program without having a clear mind. You have to basically figure out a way how to stay calm. And then if you need assistance, there are resources out there. I just need you guys to pick up a phone and call. You know, you, I mean, residents in District E, you could call our office. We want to make sure that we assist everybody. It is, can be very tedious and stressful, but we're here to help and we're going to get through this together. Carmen?
We sometimes refer to ourselves as business therapists.
Yeah.
Because our job is to keep them calm, help them think clearly, walk, talk through the solution. And many of the team members that I have are veterans of Hurricane Katrina. So I've kind of kept the team together.
Yeah. That's great. And any other, any other questions? Just one note on, and I don't know if you guys got this this morning or not, but Shashil talked about the high deductible that SBA can assist to kind of offset that expense. But the city also, this morning, launches a Hurricane Ida Insurance Deductible Program to assist homeowners. So colleagues, this is actually on ready.nola.gov. It begins today, September the 30th. So the Mayor's Office of Housing Policy and Community Development will accept application for the Hurricane Ida Insurance Deductible Program. So the city expects to spend up to about $2 million in the NIF fund that will provide financial assistance to household earning up to 140% of the area median income. So estimated at about $98,140 for a household of four. So for those that need assistance with high deductible, they can now go to ready.nola to pull up that information. And in that article, it also has the link where people can access to the application. And so this is for Orleans Parish resident only. And so the information is there. So, you know, in addition to SBA, we now, the city, because we do have people that are on fixed income, like Ms. Linda that I spoke to about earlier. You know, she was very stressed in reference to, "Well, how can I meet my high deductible if I'm on a fixed income?" And so I, you know, woke up this morning, saw this and was just, I just feel like he's answering all the, all the, all the, all the calls for us. So just really feel really blessed that this is in place. So I just want to thank the mayor and the administration, Marjana Willman with the Office of Community Development for really being proactive and, and knowing and understanding what our residents are going through. So for those that are just tuning in, you know, please go to ready.nola.gov. If you meet the income guideline, this may be a resource to assist you. But you need to go there, print out the application. You also have to make copies of your insurance policy and estimate of repairs as well. So again, I think this is great. Shashil, thank you so much for always responding to our requests. Carmen, it's always great that you're here. And thank you so much for being here with us. I know you are definitely a veteran at this. And so I could say that, you know, the trust and the experience